Good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, July 21st, 2025. I have seven o'clock, so I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the Gehanna City Council to order. We will begin with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Renner. Everyone, please stand, please.
Let us take a moment to pause and reflect. As we gather in service to our community, may we be guided by the wisdom, humility, and a shared commitment to a common good. Let us listen with open minds and speak with respectful hearts, mindful of the trust placed in us and those we are called to represent, including those whose voices are not always heard. May we remember the natural beauty that surrounds us, from the steady flow of the Big Walnut Creek to the trees and the green spaces that offer peace and shelter, and may we be good stewards of these gifts, protecting them for future generations. As we weigh the needs of today with the hopes of tomorrow, may our work strengthen the bonds of trust, promote the fairness, and ensure a healthy, sustainable future for all who call this home, with gratitude and opportunity to serve. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Renner. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Bowers is absent. Jones?
Here.
McGregor?
Here.
Padova?
Here.
Renner?
Here.
Schnitzer?
Here.
Weaver?
Here. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Moving on to Section B, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening? All right, seeing none, we will proceed as published. Before we get into our presentations this evening, just a quick reminder that after council this evening, we will be immediately proceeding into our meeting of the Committee of the Whole, so stay tuned, don't go anywhere. But next, we'll move on to presentations, and for this, I will turn things over to Mayor Jedman.
Thank you very much. I would invite Director Becker, if you would like to kind of set the stage for what we're about to do here. We do have a couple swearing ins to participate in.
Good evening, Director. Chief?
Good evening, and thank you. Tonight, we have a couple swearings in, so last year, last fall, Chief and I sat in front of you and asked for a new communications technician, number two. We wanted another supervisor in the radio room, and we're very blessed, you granted our wish, and it just came to fruition, so it was for the second half of the year. We promoted Amber Ramsey. She's been an excellent employee in our radio room, and now she's ready to bring her talents to supervision and lead us to even greater heights, so Amber, you could come forward.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Ayes.
Aye, Amber Ramsey.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and statutes.
The Constitution and statutes.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Gehanna.
Of the city of Gehanna.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police communications technician two.
Of police communications technician two.
For the Gehanna Division of Police.
For the Gehanna Division of Police.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
She would happily talk to you for hours on the phone. A little shy in front of the microphone. Also, since my arrival here, we've been trying to get our police officer ranks fully staffed. We're continuing in that effort, and we're getting ever so closer with Mr. Luke Guthrie, who's joining us. His name may sound familiar, I'll let you figure out why, but Luke's coming to us from Knox County. He's an established deputy already, so he's going to go right into field training next week and hit the ground running to protect Gehanna. So Luke, if you'd step forward.
Aye, Luke Guthrie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and statutes.
The Constitution and statutes.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Gehanna.
Of the city of Gehanna.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police officer for the Gehanna Division of Police.
A police officer.
For the Gehanna.
For the Gehanna Division of Police.
I gave you a long one, sorry. To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations and welcome to our family.
So, these two, we're excited to have and hit the ground running with them. We also have some other new people that'll be coming in front of you shortly, so we appreciate the support, the continued investment in public safety, and we're always thrilled to bring the new members here, to introduce them to the council and to all the residents, and hopefully you get to see them out and get to know them better here soon. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director. Chief Mayor, congratulations, Officer Guthrie and Ms. Ramsey, and congratulations to your families as well. I would say welcome to Gehanna, but it sounds like everybody's pretty familiar and has been associated with the city for a while, so just congratulations and thank you very much, and thank you to your colleagues for joining us as well this evening. It's always happy to have a full house, so thank you very much. Any additional comments from my colleagues at this time? All right. Next, we'll move on to Section D, Hearing of Visitors. I do have one speaker slip. Mr. Craig Clausen, you will have three minutes. As a reminder, please state your name and address for the record at the beginning of your remarks.
Sure. Good evening, Councilman. My name is Craig Clausen. I'm at 566 Dunneon Drum Leaf. And first, I want to sincerely thank you for pressing pause on the tax abatement for the Velocis Warehouse Project. Your willingness to slow down and investigate the developer's background shows real diligence, and I appreciate your commitment to protecting this public's interest. As you continue to evaluate this proposal, however, I would like to offer a broader perspective on the use of tax abatements in today's economic landscape. We're living in a time of shrinking municipal budgets. Revenue from state and federal sources is becoming less reliable, and while the cost of providing basic services, public safety, roads, schools, continue to grow, in that context, offering an 80% tax abatement worth over $3.7 million across 12 years is not a minor incentive, it's a serious financial decision with long-term consequences. These deals are often justified on the promise of job creation, but even that very premise deserves a closer examination. We're entering into an era of extreme uncertainty around the job market. The future of work is shifting rapidly due to automation and artificial intelligence. Warehouses in particular are already moving towards robotics and reduced headcounts. The 37 jobs being promised today may look very different in five years, and without enforceable guarantees, these projects remain speculative. Meanwhile, in 2019, Gehanna raised taxes on its very own residents to ensure the city could fund essential services. That was a reasonable step for the city to take, but when we turn around and offer massive abatements to private developers, we are unfairly shifting tax burden away from businesses and onto families. That's not sustainable, and it's not equitable. I urge you to continue applying the same careful scrutiny you've shown so far. Economic development is important, but it must be built on fair, transparent, and future-ready policies. Thank you for your time and your leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Clausen. Mr. Clerk, do we have any other speaker slips this evening?
None.
All right, thank you very much. All right, next up, Section E, the consent agenda. It looks like we just have a couple of minutes to approve. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Schnitzer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Renner. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Schnitzer?
Yes.
Renner?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
McGregor?
Yes.
Padova?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes. Consent agenda is adopted, is published. All right, moving right along, Section F, Correspondence and Actions. Anything, Mr. Clerk?
Nothing this evening.
Anything from my council colleagues this evening? All right, seeing none. Section G, Representatives. We will turn first to the Community Improvement Corporation. Mr. Renner, Ms. Padova? Ms. Padova?
Thank you. Our last meeting was last week on July 15th at 8:00 a.m. The mayor gave us some, let us know that uniquely Gehanna was hitting our mailboxes, which I did receive this week, updated us about the strategic planning event at Creekside on the 26th of August, and let us know to look out for the CIP plans that are coming to us also in August, that will be coming to council in August. On planning, Director Blackford said that projects have been a bit slow, so they're working, shifting their focus to working on code. And then for development, they updated us that the Cora renewal would be coming, which is going to be on Committee of the Whole here after this meeting, and also that the annexation on Johnstown Road has now gone to the county level, so it is not here at the city anymore. No updates on that. We went into executive session, and I did not write down the exact time, but we came out shortly after 9:00 a.m., I believe, and adjourned the meeting. Oh, and our next meeting will be Tuesday, August 19th at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you, Ms. Padova. Anything further, Mr. Renner?
No.
All right, thank you. Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission attached to the agenda, folks will find my Morpsey report. Also included or linked in the agenda are a couple of attachments that were provided to the mayor and I when we had our Membership Services meeting with Executive Director William Murdock and Membership Services Officer Eileen Louie with Morpsey. Some good information there. Also included is their July legislative update, although I will note that was published before this week's actions at the State House. But take a look. The commission will meet again in August. Right along, back to you, Mrs. Padova, for the CBB.
Yes, I have, oh, I take that back. The next farmer's market is this Thursday, I believe I'm getting that date right, and I'm sure that the mayor will talk more on that, but this Thursday at Creekside, and then on the, sorry, I started too soon here, and also save the date for August 2nd for the Pelotonia cheering station in Gehanna hosted by Visit Gehanna at 7:30 a.m., so you can go to Visit Gehanna to get more information on that.
Thank you, Ms. Padova. School Board, Ms. Jones?
No update for me this evening.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Jones. Now into Section H, Official Reports, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Just a few things to share. First of all, again, we're proud to welcome Officer Luke Guthrie to our public safety team and to congratulate Amber Ramsey on her very well-deserved promotion. As we all know, those roles were critical to public safety and the delivery of those services to the well-being of our community, from the first call to the final response. They serve with professionalism, dedication, commitment, have every confidence that Amber will continue to serve in that regard, and that Officer Guthrie, if he looked familiar, you'll see the mannerisms, they're all there, they all look the same, it's all good, but know that he's bringing a wealth of experience with him as well, so look forward to having them as part of our team. Several weeks ago, Director Anvers from our Department of Public Service was here, provided an update on the work of that department, projects that are underway, investments that we have been making. He specifically mentioned our investment in a new street sweeper, creating that new program, bringing that important function in-house, and enabling us to expand the level of services that we provide to our residents and the community while reducing the costs of that service. Under the street sweeping program, the city has been divided into five zones. The goal is to sweep all roadways three to five times a year. By comparison, when we contracted that out, roadways were done twice a year, and then after special events, but they've already begun their work. There is a map available on Gehanna.gov where you can see with projected timeframes, they're estimating like a two-week window for every zone to cover, but you can go on there, see where they're going to be working in your area. It also provides a very detailed explanation of the benefits of the street sweeping program, not only improving the aesthetics of the city, but also helping with flood prevention and improving the quality of water in local streams. By getting that debris out of the streams, it helps all of those things. I know our team's very excited about that, you know, like little kids with Legos and cars, they're just having a ball with the street sweeper, they're very excited to get trained on that, but they are, we're very thrilled to get that program underway, so look for them out in your neighborhood sometime soon. And then just quickly, upcoming events, a few things uniquely Gehanna has hit the mailboxes. If you have not received yours yet, keep an eye out for it. Great stories on new businesses, development projects, the Argahana Strategic Plan, our recent Citizens Academy, and a story on the upcoming Alumni Musical this weekend. Councilman Weaver, I will let you talk about that, but I do have tickets for both Friday and Sunday, just because I couldn't decide which day to go, so if anybody needs some extra tickets, let me know. We do have the Gehanna Market this Wednesday, I believe it's from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Creekside Park. So far, the forecast looks, we'll just say promising, we won't go any further than that. Wednesdays have a tendency to not be promising around here, but the last time we had, I think, 30 vendors for that, and there are that many, if not more, lined up for this week as well, so we hope to see everybody out there. Since we will not be together again before this, I want to mention August 2nd is a busy day here, that's a Saturday. Will be a busy day here in Gehanna. It kicks off with Pelotonia riding through Gehanna in the morning. They'll be taking the same path as before, coming, entering the city northbound on Hamilton Road to Tech Center, Morrison, and then east on Taylor Road. I believe Visit Gehanna and Make Gehanna Yours are partnering again on Spirit Stations to cheer those folks on as they ride through our city. That actually is always a great time. So that's first thing Saturday morning, that's followed by the Capital City Corvette Car Show that will be at Creekside. I believe that runs from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and we'll have road closures posted along the roadways as well. And then that evening is the Columbus Jazz Orchestra at Headley Park presented by the Gehanna Area Arts Council. So if you cannot find something to do in Gehanna on that day, that is all on you, because there's plenty of happening. And then the following week, just to give it a shout-out, Tuesday, August 5th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., our Division of Police will be hosting National Night Out. That event will be held at Headley Park. I believe Councilman Weaver and I and Chief Spencer are all in line for the Dunk Tank, so save your coins. I don't know exactly what the cost is to participate in that, but we'll make a good donation for something.
We've warmed the water up adequately.
I'm hoping to put the water out early, early in the day, so by 5:00 p.m., it's ready for us, yes. But more information on that event can be found at Gehanna.gov, and that event is always great. I know our officers look forward to that and to being able to engage with the community and the kids. They always just have a great time with the kids, exploring the vehicles and the equipment, et cetera, so hope to see everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. I am pleased to report that we did have an outcome in the Brookwood Construction versus City of Gehanna litigation in federal court. This lawsuit was filed January of 2023 and has been pending for various federal and state claims. A motion for summary judgment was granted in favor of the city, and the federal court declined to hear the state claim, so that case is now dismissed and closed. I will update you if there's any appeals from that, but the decision was very thorough and favorable to the city, so that's all I have for today.
Excellent, thank you, City Attorney. All right, we will now move on to council comments. Mrs. Jones?
Nothing for me.
All right, Mrs. McGregor?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Renner?
Ditto, thank you.
Mrs. Padova?
Nothing for me either.
Okay, Mr. Schnitzer?
I can't wait to see you.
I wouldn't but for the mayor teed it up for me. So yes, this coming weekend, July 25th through 27th, is the first-ever GLHS Alumni Musical. While I am a proud alumni of the Gehanna Schools and of course, the theater program, you will not see me tapping in the show this weekend. First of all, nobody wants to see me tap dance, that has been thoroughly proven and cleared. Nobody wants to see that.
I think we do, actually.
But. Put it to a vote. I do still have my shoes. No, the number of alumni participating has been really amazing to see the number of folks who've come back to Gehanna. The age range represents 60 years in graduating classes in terms of participants. With the little one on the way at the time during rehearsal process, it was not going to be feasible for me to participate in that capacity, but I've been honored to help out on the production team throughout the process. So one last chance for alumni to participate or perform on the current GLHS theater stage, so encourage folks to get their tickets. You can visit glhsalumnymusical.com to do that. And then I will just remind folks that there is no meeting next week, and we will see folks back for the next regularly scheduled council meeting on August 4th. Anything further for council before we adjourn and go to Committee of the Whole? All right, seeing none, we will adjourn council. Mr. Clerk, let me know when we are good to go.
We are good to go.
All right, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Good evening, everyone. We will go ahead and call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order at 7:21 p.m. on July 21st, on 7:21, so how fitting. We will get started first with items from the Department of Engineering. Good evening, Director.
Good evening. For the record, I did turn the mic on correctly. Good evening. We have four items before you this evening. The first two items are related to the sidewalk maintenance and ADA transition, our sidewalk maintenance program. We have the 2022 program and 2024 program following its conclusion of construction activities for the assessment, the public hearing and assessment. Kind of taking a step back, in 2021, the 21 program completed in 2023, we had some lessons learned associated with that body of work that then led to an update to our code, then the 22 program. Then the 22 program that was already in, in the works in 23 came to fruition, went through the construction activity. One of the things of note is getting on a pace where the programs follow the actual years of construction. So the 24 program occurred in 24. We tallied quantities and we're at a point where the final field measured quantities are, had been calculated and were, and provided notice to those residents within the program area. And the public hearing is slated for August 4th for both of those programs. And any questions related to, to those two items?
Any discussion from my colleagues?
I do have just a question.
Mrs. Jones.
On the cost summary, can you clarify the owner defect cost versus the total? And then the resident is only responsible for 50% I think of the defect cost?
Two for two, Director Comley.
With me is Paige Wright, our Senior Transportation and Mobility Engineer, who administers the program.
So the total cost of all work performed includes both those defects attributed to the resident as well as anything attributed to the city. So that could be panels associated with curb ramps. It could be panels where the water valve was lifted or there was a crack around the water valve that we attributed to the city. So the city replaced at full city cost. So the resident is responsible for the owner attributed portion, which excludes anything that we identified as city-only cost.
And it's only 50% of that cost?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? Director, I think I heard that we are wrapping up the 2022 and 2024 programs with these items and that the 2023 program is completed.
The 23 program, actually because of the pause that we had with the code updates, we then moved, moved into 20, 24 by time we got stepped into it.
So no additional items forthcoming for the 2023 program?
Correct.
Okay. Excellent. I do see that emergency is requested for both of these. Are folks okay with consent on the 4th? Excuse me. It would be a first reading on the 4th and then a, a vote on the 18th, excuse me. Consent on the 18th, Mr. Clerk, please. All right, next item, please.
And the next two items are related to requesting permission to bid. So we have our street rebuild and water line. The scope of the street rebuild and water line project is Laura, Heil, Rocky Fork Drive North. We're at a point where plans are finalized and we're, we're looking for permission to bid to, to go out for, for contracting.
Thank you, Director. Any discussion on this item? Mrs. Podova.
Thank you. I do have a few questions on this. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Will, can you remind me if on Rocky Fork, will sidewalks be on both sides or just one side?
Both sides.
Both sides, okay. And then on Laura and Heil, are those, in that area, there's sidewalks on, existing sidewalks on one side but not on the other? Will the existing sidewalks be torn up or will you just be adding them on the other side?
So some of the sidewalk, existing sidewalk facility will be removed and replaced to ADA compliance through, through the corridor. In areas where existing, where sidewalk does not exist, we had a public meeting with the residents and the desire was not to have sidewalks installed. They would follow the petition for assessment, no valid petition came forward. So we're, we are not moving forward with those areas that presently do not have sidewalks, but the, the areas that do have sidewalks, there will be improvements there.
Okay, so you've already had a meeting with all the residents and this has been communicated on both of those and Rocky Fork as well?
Correct.
Okay, awesome. And then this is, I, I want to make sure I understand this, is, was this part of the 2025 budget, but the work will be done in 2026?
So it is part of the 25 budget. Water line work will, will occur over the winter with, with the rebuild work occurring in the spring of next year.
Okay. I believe that was the only thing I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Director, any other discussion on this item? Mrs. McGregor.
On Rocky Fork North, on the north side, there's some driveways that are, how are you gonna do the sidewalks with the?
So we went through engineering design to, to get the, the profile grades to work out and it, it works, so.
Good job.
Experts.
Any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, this is a motion, so next, on the fourth consent agenda? All right, and then if, if folks will excuse me, I think in an effort towards transparency, since there is a public hearing on those first two items, ordinances 31 and 32, I would be more comfortable with those on the regular agenda rather than the consent agenda.
Yes, please, thank you.
Thank you. All right, last item, please, Director.
The last item is requesting permission to bid on the Taylor Road water line replacement from Morrison Road to Helmbride. This upgrade, this upsizes the existing 12-inch line to a 16-inch line to provide for growth anticipated in the, in the region and growth that we're experiencing, as well as providing resiliency to, to the network of our potable water distribution system.
Thank you, Director. Any discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, it's a motion on for consent on the 4th? All right, thank you very much. Thank you. Next up, we will move on to items from the Department of Economic Development, returning, excuse me, first up, we have the Cora ordinance. Good evening, Director.
Hello, thank you. Going to attempt to put on the screen up there. Give me a second to mess it up.
Turn the mic on, Jeff. Thank you, Daniel.
Need to switch it.
This is a new trip. I've never seen this.
Yeah, didn't.
Your mouse is up there.
So we'll just do that.
I'll take that off.
Technology makes life so much easier.
Still not what I want, but that's good enough. Okay, thanks for your patience there. Counsel, I have four slides to talk about the Cora reauthorization, which is required by statute to occur after five years of the initial implementation of Cora, which will be up mid-August. So it's time to review and reauthorize Cora. I had a, one slide about, just a reminder of what, what DORA in the revised code, or Cora, as we call it here, is and what that says. Do a little success report, two changes, and then the calendar for moving forward. So Doras are, are laid out in Revised Code 430182, a specified area of land set aside for exemptions to certain open container laws that contains. And there are some very clear requirements there about having a clearly marked area, that it be no more than 320 contiguous acres. It has permanent boundary signs. Businesses within the area can opt-in or opt-out, essentially like having carry-in beverages or not. Liquor license holders can opt-in or opt-out of serving those beverages as well. That the rules be clearly posted around the region and that there are designated non-glass containers. In our case, we have plastic cups in the warmer months and sort of hotter liquid cups in the colder months. It requires that there be a health and safety plan. That a health and safety plan has to be approved by the police chief. Basically, ours says that we will designate one officer to the Cora area with the, with the option of including more should the need arise. It requires a sanitation plan, which has been approved by the Parks and Rec Department and the service departments, which require receptacles at each establishment that designate a Cora establishment that serves the beverages and receptacles throughout the area that are maintained by the city. The Cora Committee, the Cora Group, which is run by the city now, meets every year. That's outside of the law. We do that extra and review how, how things went over the previous year. The, all right, I'll get to that in a second. And then participation is another requirement. The Cora, the DORA has to be in accordance with the master land use plan and there has to be at least four participants with certain types of liquor licenses who agree to participate. I mentioned businesses can opt-in and opt-out, servers must receive special training, and they're designated non-glass containers. So that's generally how it, how it works, both here in Gehanna and according to the revised code. So if we look at some successes, I mentioned there's a group that meets every year. It's made up of city folks, development is there, safety, sanitation, services, parks, business owners, Visit Gehanna, stakeholders there to review the program every year. Here is what we talked about when we met a couple of weeks ago. 23 and 24, there were almost 14,000 cups sold. So if you conservatively estimate each beverage at $6, then that would be $84,000 to those participating establishments. And of course, there's a greater induced effect because data has shown that people that purchase a Cora beverage do stay longer in the area. So they will enjoy the green spaces and the parks we heard about earlier during the message and they also do some window shopping and linger and retail and maybe get a bite to eat, whereas they maybe wouldn't have before. So, so there are demonstrated economic successes there. As to safety, the chief reports that there have, that there were no Cora-related incidents with the police department this year. So nothing that happened is attributed to the existence of Cora. That's both businesses, that's underage consumers, that's with the general public, zero. And then on the sanitation side, there, they reported that there was no increase in service in other words, there were not more trash cans to empty, there was, there was no more work to do because of the existence of Cora in the Cora district. So that's a good, that showed that the program is a success and designed how we intended it. So there are two requested changes that were made by participating businesses. We discussed this at the meeting and then the committee agreed to them all pending your approval. So what you're doing here is actually two, two things in one. So you're reauthorizing the Cora for five more years and making these two changes to it. It can all happen in one, one piece of legislation, but there's essentially two different actions that are happening. So the first thing that the participating businesses requested were to set uniform hours of 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. daily. That's a change of only three days a week, Monday through Wednesday, 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. So we'll just back that up for those few hours during those three days a week. And then to expand the eastern boundary of the area over one block to capture the west side of Short Street. So there are businesses in that area that would like to participate in Cora but can't because they're currently outside of the previously established area. So that would just mean we're moving the area, what a block, I think, to the east and then kind of squaring it off in the south where it, where it, where the, where Short Street ends and then it has to kind of jog over to. High Street, right? So those were the two changes that were requested by the businesses. And then lastly, here's the process. It does require a public hearing, which is set for August 4th. Yep, that's right. And then a second reading on the 18th. And then, of course, here we are today. So happy to take any questions. Do you have any?
Thank you, Director. Any discussion from my colleagues? I see Mr. Renner, then Mrs. McGregor.
Director, thank you very much for that. Remind me, something you said, are all the businesses that can, are they supportive of, are they participating in the Cora? Or is there a percentage that's not?
That's, that's a good question. I don't know the answer to that. In other words, you're asking how many have those like no Cora sticker?
Right.
Stickers on their window?
Right.
I, I don't have the answer to that.
Okay.
I would say I'm not aware of any business that has a no Cora sticker.
Yeah, I haven't seen them, but I was trying to remember.
There are, no one, there's not a business who has asked for a sticker, to my knowledge, since we started the Cora back in, wanted to go all of 2020.
Right, right, excellent. My second question is, is, does the new area for the Cora include the spaces for, that might be developed in the future?
It does. Well, you're talking about the CIC-owned property?
Yes.
So the property on Granville Street, or on Mill Street is already in the existing Cora and then the proposed expansion would include those others on High Street?
Perfect.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Mrs. McGregor.
There are no businesses there in the expanded area that are now, correct?
There are. This was at the request of some of the businesses in the area to expand it to include them.
For, for example, the Thable Collection that sits at the corner of, of High and Carpenter regularly schedules a Creekside boutique hop. And so she brings vendors in, they fill North Street, but where the boundary currently is, there have been issues with people wanting to carry a beverage beyond that and they can't because of where the boundary ends. So extending it over just, right, right now where, where the boundary ends, they would not be, they would not be able to participate in boutique hop and then cross the street or to, to even go northward into her business. So she had asked, she was one of the businesses that had specifically asked if we could expand the boundary. Now we also have Sergeant Coffee, which is on the other side of the, other side of the street that's moved into where Fox and Fox used to be. And, and it really just takes the boundary from the sidewalk in front to the sidewalk in back of the businesses or the buildings that are on the, the east side of High Street, if that makes sense.
Does it put it closer to, I mean, within the prohibited area? Does it put it closer to, I mean, within the prohibited area around the schools? From the schools? I mean, you can only have it so?
Revised Code does not require any prohibited area around schools.
Correct. We, correct.
I thought when we first, they--
We chose to just, because we were starting it and we didn't know what it would look like, we chose to do that. That was our decision. But there isn't, to Director Gocke's point, I do not believe there's any prohibition or restriction in the hierarchy of Ice Code that would give that kind of limitation. But as we've seen over the last five years, it has not presented an issue.
So there's no prohibition on selling alcohol within, but there is prohibition on selling alcohol within a certain area around a school, correct?
Yes and no. So that boundary is not, Cora does not have any effect on that boundary. What you're thinking of could be is certain liquor licenses prohibit.
Right.
If there's an objection, prohibit selling alcohol within 500 feet of a school.
Okay.
But I don't believe that objection exists. And so if it was, then you'd just sort of carve that area out of Cora. But that is not in effect at this time.
Just as a quick follow-up, there's signage marking the end of the Cora boundary, and I'm assuming as the boundary is moving further to Carpenter, we would have signage there.
We'd have to adjust the signage.
Just making sure that nobody's moving across the street to the baseball field or to the scrap. So, sorry.
Sorry, Counsel. The only thing, the other thing I was going to add is, speaking to our sustainability initiatives, so the cups that are currently used for Cora cups are compostable cups. That was a move that we made toward that. And just as a reminder, we did get a $35,000 grant from SUECO that now has the recycling containers specifically were added for the Cora cups throughout the district. So it doesn't increase the sanitation services because they're picking up trash anyway, but it does lessen the amount of actual trash versus sending things to recycling. So we continue to make those efforts throughout the district related to this program as well.
Thank you for that. Ms. Padova?
Thank you. I was wondering, I see the cutout here where it does kind of like a jog around the sanctuary. Was Lola and Giuseppe's asked if they wanted to be in there, or were they?
They declined.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't forgetting about them in this. And has there been any thought, and this might, maybe it would make it too large of an area, but maybe something to consider in the next five years when this comes around of expanding it up to the collective home supply for similar reasons as going to the Fable Collection?
So first of all, we don't have to wait five years to expand it. That can be done in time.
Okay, so we can bring that back. If that was something that was desired, we could bring it back at some other time?
Yes, ma'am. We just happen to line up this year.
Okay, nice.
So the whole, if we remember, the whole point of having a Dora, the designated outdoor refreshment areas, to create that walkable area where they can go from establishment to establishment and walk within, again, that defined boundary. Right now, you have Blue Agave and then Gehenna Girls in that boundary, and then there are quite a few parcels until you would get to the next establishment. So we did have conversations around, was it time to take it further east? I don't know that we're there yet. But as Granville Street, you know, as new businesses continue to be added along Granville Street, as we expand those establishments that would incentivize walkability from establishment to establishment, I think we would adjust as needed or as appropriate at that time.
Awesome. Thank you. And then I think you answered my next question there, but just to make sure, as any other new restaurants come into this, the area that we're defining here, what's the process? Do they just come to the city to be a participant in this?
We would reach out.
Okay. Okay. I believe that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padova. I would just add, thank you, Director, for bringing this forward. Happy to see the standardization of the hours. I know that had created some confusion with some folks, so it's just nice to see that standardized. I think that will help with the ease of understanding and compliance. I certainly appreciate Ms. Padova's question, the mayor's explanation there as well. Looking at the zoning map, you know, the application talks about the Creekside mixed-use zoning, and you see that that extends a good way down Granville Street. So who knows? Maybe in the future, that may be more appropriate to expand, but I'm comfortable with where it is, well, with what is proposed right now. So thank you for that. Any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, since there is a public hearing, I would request that this is on the regular agenda on the, excuse me, on the 18th, with the first on the 4th, if that works. All right. Thank you very much. Next item, please, Director Gocke. We are returning for further discussion postponed from our July 7th meeting, a discussion regarding Velocis and an abatement application.
Okay, so--
Giving thanks to our guests as well.
So what I thought would be helpful to start--
Hang on.
What I thought would be helpful is, this is, we've talked about it a lot, so I thought maybe I could provide you with a summary of questions, issues that have come up on your part, that maybe I could help to provide some clarity to help you all make your decision. So you were provided with a printed memo that I wrote right before the meeting. It's also in your email. I'm not trying to drop stuff on you at the last minute. It's just, you know, things get done when a job takes as long as it has, right? And so you don't have to consume all of that tonight. I have a few slides that I'd like to share, mostly the graphics from that memo that helped, like I said, that helped to clarify or maybe crystallize some of the issues. So after that, then we have representatives of the company who are here can talk more in-depth about some of those issues. And then I believe the mayor has a few comments that she would like to make. So, thank you. So here's what I would, what came up, so I watched the meetings, took a lot of notes. What came up was what I identified as four big questions that you all had over this process. Is it financially worth it for the city? How does this compare to other abatement projects in the city? How do we know who we are doing business with? And is there a need for this type of building in Gehenna? So I've got lots of graphics, some new data, but no complicated spreadsheets. So I framed the memo up according to the questions, and same with the slides here, and I pulled some information from that. So number one, is it financially worth it? You all in the past have used a BUT-4 standard to determine abatements. In other words, BUT-4 this abatement, the project would not happen. Okay? Don't be the dumbest money in the deal. You know, it's a need-based program. So we talked earlier about the BUT-4 standard was met here on a financial basis because it's meant to make rent affordable for potential tenants. So you can see there gross rent without the abatement, gross rent with the abatement. In other words, the savings the abatement would bring to the company, and then the average regional gross rent to show you that those are right in line, that that affordability measure has been hit using the average gross rent around the region. If that makes sense? Okay. Two, is it worth it? So this is the return on investment. Will the city get its money back? From the complicated spreadsheet I showed you before, I added a new box and show that box here that gives you a summary of pre-abatement, what that property pays now, to the schools, $11,000, to the city, $406, and to a TIF yet to be, no, it's in a TIF, to a TIF, $0. During the abatement, that jumps to $102,000 for the schools, and $52,000 if you include income tax and the TIF, because there is that 20%. It's only an 80% reduction, so there is that 20% that it will be paying. And then, of course, you can see the company there for those 12 years. Post-abatement, school collections jump to $226,000. The city goes up to $213,000 via TIF and income tax percentage. One piece of data that I neglected in the past was the effect of construction. So that would be over the next year, about $153,000 in income tax collections from the onsite collection, construction. So you can add that to the plus column for the city. So if you do the math, and I had to do this two or three times because the percentages were astronomically high, and I even had to use the percent change calculator on the internet just to make sure my math was right. But if you look at from where it's at now annually to year 13 annually, those are the percentage increases to the city and to the schools for this project. So if you're using an ROI standpoint, that's a pretty good percent increase from before to after. Continuing, is it financially worth it? Let's look at job creation. So one of the exhibits, appendix to the memo, is a comparison of other speculative projects in the city. There are six. So we looked at what they pledged in terms of jobs, payroll, salary. We looked at their 2024 reporting, so this is the information that goes to Turk in about a month, and then looked at the difference, because we've been talking about, like, is speculative development worth it? So how have speculative developments performed in the city? And in 2024, based on what they pledged, you can see it's plus 17 jobs over what they pledged, plus 2.4 million in payroll over what was pledged, and plus $17,000 in salary over what was pledged. So if we think about speculative developments and being worth it, there's some data that support that as well. So that was the first question. Onto number two, how does this project compare to other abatement projects? So again, I looked at other speculative development projects, but first I looked at CRA 3. So there are nine abatements in CRA Area 3. So how does this proposed project measure up against them? That exhibit is also in your packet as Exhibit B, I believe. So the takeaway here, if you look at the graphic up there, the total investment in this project ranks second of the nine projects. Job creation ranks fourth of the nine projects. Payroll ranks fifth, although this is the only one with guaranteed payroll, don't forget. The abatement term is tied for fourth, and the abatement percentage is tied for fifth. So you can kind of look at it as the benefits are in the top half, and the abatement amount is average for the area when we think about how does it compare and is it worth it? So on to all the other, the other five speculative developments in the city. It ranks third in total investment, fifth in job creation, second in total payroll, although none of the others are guaranteed, second in salary, second in building size and parcel size, which I included in case you're doing any kind of like comparisons of footprint or, you know, per square foot impact or something like that. And then the abatement term and percentage is, there's only five others, right? And they range from seven years, 75%, to 15 years, 100%. So there's not a lot of comparison to make, but it sits again in the middle, second and third, tied with a couple others in terms of term and rate. So again, it offers, I would kind of classify as above-average returns with a average rate and term. Question three, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this because the company knows themselves better than we do, so they can speak a lot to that. But how do we know who we are doing business with has come up with the allegations of lawsuits and such? From the city side, we do our own vetting. We have some questions on the incentive application that deal with delinquent taxes. We also, where appropriate, maybe speak with other city departments about property maintenance violations, other types of delinquencies or deficiencies within city code to verify that from a city side. What's helpful for projects is when Jobs Ohio gets involved. I'm assuming you all know what Jobs Ohio is and what they do, but they have hundreds of millions of dollars at their disposal, thanks to Cora partly because of how they're funded, hundreds of millions of dollars at their disposal to make grants and loans for economic development projects, okay? They only incentivize net new projects, so nothing that moves within the state, only new projects created or new businesses into the state. They also only incentivize projects or businesses that fit into 11 industry sectors. So these are industry sectors that we would classify as economic base, which means they bring money into the community, they don't just cycle it around. So consider manufacturing is great at that, right? Because they export a product and import other people's money. So these 11 industries are all economic base, and they're all based on Ohio's comparative advantage, or they're based on target industries that Ohio could get based on location, education, workforce, et cetera, et cetera. So you kind of know that if Jobs Ohio is putting its money behind it, that it's a worthy project on those grounds. They also do their own set of vetting, rigorous vetting, because they're putting their own money into the deal. So attached to your packet as well is two other documents. One is just the Jobs Ohio intake, I'm interested in a project introductory application. And the second is for a specific program meant for speculative site development called the Ohio Site Improvement Program. So you can see that, I think it's four pages, and the lengthy requirements that it has for submission from project details, company information, market data, et cetera. I took two sections from that and put it up here, and you can see the arrow focuses on one dealing with company history, company reputation, I guess we would say. But Jobs Ohio's success speaks for itself. Since 2011, they've done 2,800 projects with 500 different companies domestically and internationally, and invested, again, hundreds of millions of dollars of their own money into these projects. Okay, so then the fourth question would be, is there a need for this type of building in the community? We've talked a lot about the design of the building in terms of, by design, I don't mean what it looks like on the outside, but how it's built, right? In terms of flexible industrial warehouse with some office. It's really meant to serve two main uses, that of manufacturing, light manufacturing, or warehouse with an office component as well. So I believe Nate Green showed you this spreadsheet at the last meeting. So to justify the demand, we get probably weekly, maybe every other week on average, requests for site submittals from Jobs Ohio. So they say, hey, we have a company, and here are their requirements. Send us all of the sites that you have that fit these requirements. So what you see up there are all of the sites that were submitted since 2024 that we were unable to submit for because the city of Gehenna didn't have the sites. And so you can see there the project details, square footage, jobs, investment, what the use is, that's kind of general, or building need, and then what industry they're in. And this is important for us because I think it's been said that there's only-- And this is important for us because I think it's been said, there's only so much land in the city, and you can't get more, so we got to be smart about it. So attracting certain industries is, 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 is important. So I highlighted in blue all of the industries that exist already in the city, and then white is industries that don't. I highlighted, I highlighted those because existing industries are easier to attract other existing industries, right? They either want to create some sort of industry cluster, think Silicon Valley, right? Or in some ways, they want to be near their competition. So they'll say, where's my competition setup shop? I want to go right next to them and get just a little bit building, bigger building to show off maybe. So it's easier to attract similar industries to a place, but of course, we also want to have, be mindful of a diversified economy as well. This will also give you an indicator of job numbers. And this is also how, when, when they, when the company said, hey, we're going to bring 37 jobs, of course, I verify that too. This is one of those indicators is what, what do their peers, what do other buildings of a similar nature also estimate in job creation? Okay, so benefits of existing space, we've talked about that before. We don't necessarily want any speculative development, but you can sort of think of it maybe as, um, as a homeowner. There are certain times when you'd want to rent versus own, right? If you're new to an area, you may want to rent until you find a place to buy. If you're just starting out and you don't have the capital to buy a house, you may want to rent before you buy. The same is true with businesses. So businesses basically look at renting or leasing for three big reasons. One, speed to market. I need a building that's built that I can move into quickly. I have orders to fill, I have customers to satisfy, and I need this space, and I don't have 18 to 24 months to wait for my building to be built. For reference, the first contact from the, the company here was made in September of 2024. So we're going on 10 months, and we're not even through this process yet. So it takes a long time to build. Emerging companies, and by that I mean startups, you want to have space for startups. You want those homegrown companies, but they need space. You want to have mid-sized space. Think about going from your starter home to your family home, right? You got to have that too, either for startups or new companies that want to come to the, to, to the city. And then some, some businesses say, we don't own property, we're lease-only companies, and that's just part of our corporate structure, and that's how we, how we do business. So you've got to have that mix of leasable space within the, within the city. So I will then point to seven businesses that were in this exact situation at one point or another in their history in the city of Gehanna. So they were either startups and grew into business and stayed here, or they were, or they moved into the market and expanded into existing space because, as we all know, Gehanna's a great place to do business. There's this old economic development saying that space wins the race, right? No space, no, no, no business, right? So here are, I would say, seven success stories of space winning the race. It would be very easy for them to look outside of the city had we not had space here available. And then, second to lastly, yes, second to lastly, if that's a thing, is there a need for this type of building in the city? So this is from June 2025 data from One Columbus, a regional economic development partner. They track available space, and here it is classified by size and by location. So as you can see, the 100 to 199,000 square foot is building is the, the lowest, has the fewest number of buildings in the region, right? So that tells you that it's in demand, which is true, and sales, sales data bears that out, that this kind of data, or this kind of building is in demand. 77% of all buildings leased up in quarter two of this year were to buildings 50 to 300,000 square feet. I could drill down on that farther, and it's probably within that 100 to 200 range. Of course, these are in varying conditions with different amenities in different locations, right? What we're, what, what, what's proposed here is Class A space in the prime location for transportation, for travel, for quality of life in the Columbus region. We know this building would be very attractive. So lastly, I'll just end with, is there a need for this type of building? These are two projects sitting on my desk that I got over the last couple of weeks. Inquiries from one Gehanna-based business that wants to expand and is looking for space that this could provide the need for, 15 to 20,000 square feet, and one business that existed here went to a neighboring community and wants to come back, and they're looking for 50 to 60,000 square feet that this particular building would fill, or at least a portion of that building would fill their need. So that's what I had. I hope that was helpful maybe in kind of bringing some of this back together a little bit from the, the several meetings we've talked about it. I can, at this point, then turn it over to the company representatives who can address these four questions more in depth, but happy to take any questions from you in the meantime.
Why don't we pause here for just a moment and see if there's any questions right now? But then I'm happy to, I see Ms. Padova, then happy to, of course, allow.
Thank you so much for all of this information. I do have one question about, on page four here, the five speculative projects that you Do you know what the, like, timeframe, are those, were those five speculative projects built over the last five years, 10 years? How long of a timeframe?
Those are existing abatements. So they would be within, I believe it's in the, in the exhibit, it has the length of time. One of them is set to expire in, in 2025, and then the rest would go through until, when's the last one speculative that was done?
So they would probably all be somewhere between like 10 to 15 years?
Yeah, it would be anywhere between, they would expire next year till 2037 if this one is approved, right?
Okay, so they, the five that you were comparing could have been done in the last, like, 10 years?
Right, yeah. It's, it's, yeah, existing abatements.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what the, what the timeframe of that, if we're comparing something that happened in the last five years or the last 10 years, or, okay?
It, yeah, it's a variety.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padova. I see Mrs. Jones.
So page five of the packet that you gave talks about our economic development department and those kind of four things that we also investigate.
Yep.
I was particularly concerned, interested in like number two, consulting with local communities where the applicant has other abatements. Specifically for this request, I believe, new to the area, so of our normal vetting process, these one through four, kind of what did that process look like for this particular applicant, knowing that they're new to, to our area, new to this state, I believe? Is that correct?
In, yeah, in this, yes, new to the state.
Okay.
So.
No, go ahead, sorry.
Okay, so on, on our side, so I'll answer the second, number two. So just like companies talk about us, right? They want to know what it's like to do business, and how hard is it, you know, that kind of stuff. Economic developers do the same thing. So I'm, if, if I'm aware of a project in another community, I can call them up and say, what was your experience like with this company? Did they perform? That can be verified through auditor websites and Turk reporting data. Some county auditors are better than others. Ours happens to have a very good system. So we, we do check up on other communities' experience with similar, with similar developers.
Okay, but we weren't able to do that for Ohio for this?
Right, because, because it's new, right? Right, right.
Okay, thank you.
So as a follow-up, was there outreach done to communities outside of Ohio then, since there was nothing in Ohio?
Yeah, that, it's different systems, right? I mean, every, every state is different. We really don't call around the country for that, for that sort of thing. Again, this is where I would point to the benefit of Jobs Ohio support, and that's a pretty big indicator for us that it's, it's reputable.
Since you mentioned the Jobs Ohio reporting, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Don't mean to step on your toes, Mrs. Jones. I, I know you submit, you included in our packet the, the blank application. Was there a completed application, and is, does Jobs Ohio provide like a report back?
They, they do not share their
Okay.
...application information, and all of their reporting is aggregated.
Okay. I, I know it can be, Jobs Ohio keeps a lot of things close to the chest, understandably so, so I, I.
I have another one.
Mrs. Jones, I'm sorry.
Okay, I wanted to follow up on the Jobs Ohio. So is my understanding that this is for a grant through Jobs Ohio? Is that what this application was for?
That program is a combination of things, so I'm not sure what exactly
Okay.
...the award was.
Maybe that's something they can speak to later?
It is.
Okay. Pencil that for later, star that for later, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Jones. Anything for right now, otherwise I'll turn things back over to Director Gocke. All right, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So company representatives, they're, they can address those four, those four issues maybe as you see them as well.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you for the opportunity to address questions or concerns you may have regarding the proposed ordinance on behalf of Velocis and KBC Advisors. I'm back. My name is Jonathan Postwiler. Before speaking to the ordinance itself, though, I feel it's important to express my disappointment with the way the July 7th City Council meeting transpired. While I sincerely appreciate the deep levels of diligence demonstrated by members of this council, I am troubled by the lack of transparency shown in the events leading up to the meeting and the prolonged delays that have plagued the approval process. To address Mr. Clausen's comments earlier this evening and as it relates to the proposed development, the site has sat idle for decades, generating no additional tax revenue and failing to achieve its highest and best use. In an effort to encourage investment and job creation, the city established a community reinvestment area that includes this site, a policy every subsequent council has upheld, acknowledging the role abatements play in economic growth. Despite the underlying agreement of necessity, abatement terms and percentages still ebb with political tides. Lacking clear standards, the process remains opaque, arbitrary, and inconsistent with the demands of due process. If viewed objectively, the tax abatement we seek today is more economically favorable to the city of Gehanna than the most recent approved speculative development. In February of 2022, this council approved a 15-year, 100% tax abatement for Skennell Properties, 292,000 square foot speculative industrial development at 1,800 Deff and Bot Court. That development was located within CRA 1, which is also a post-1994 CRA. This ordinance was passed with an emergency clause and a wave-second reading to fast-track approvals. No job creation guarantees were included, and the projected economic benefit amounted to 40 new jobs and 1.47 million in payroll. Despite being less than half the size, our proposed project has a shorter 12-year term, a lower 80% abatement, and still offers significantly greater economic value, including more than a half a million in additional payroll and developer guarantees surrounding the payroll tax. Notably, even though Skennell was involved in unrelated litigation before, during, and since their approval, this council did not view that as a barrier to approving the abatement. Viewed in this context, the current process creates the appearance of an uneven and subjective approach to evaluating projects, one that risks diminishing the substantial time, capital, and professional commitment our team has made and intends to continue making in the city of Gehanna. The absence of clearly defined standards for tax abatement term or percentage only deepens this uncertainty and sends a discouraging signal to the broader development community. Despite our concerns, our team remains fully committed to working collaboratively with the city of Gehanna to bring forward a high-quality project that delivers meaningful, long-term benefits to this community. With that being said, Councilmember Jones, you did have a question regarding the Jobs Ohio, the approval process. To briefly summarize, our, our Jobs Ohio improvement process, to get to the point where we are today, which is full internal approvals from Jobs Ohio, draft grant agreement is on our way for review, so we've gone through a bunch of different meetings. But we had to submit a full organizational chart, documentation confirming good standing of relevant entities, certificates to do business in Ohio, and banking information associated with all of our entities to Jobs Ohio as part of our grant application. Those materials were accepted without objection or concern by Jobs Ohio, who has since received the internal approvals and is now issuing the grant agreement. That draft agreement came over in form early on in the process. It's a 30 to 50-page grant agreement, but at this point, they've fully vetted us, they have approved the project for grant amount, and we will be executing the grant agreement upon receipt of that. I do have one more statement I'd like to read regarding economic impact in particular. I think it, it addresses some of the points residents of Gehanna have made in this meeting and prior meetings, but I'd like to take a moment and clarify three key points related to the proposed project that Jeff also touched on, but the first is, there is no loss to the city if the abatement is approved. Without approval of the abatement, the project will not proceed. For those focused on what the city might be giving up by approving the abatement, the answer is simple, nothing. Approval means the city will receive its share of taxes based on the increased underlying land value, plus 20% of the property taxes on the new improvements we are proposing to invest in your community. If the abatement is denied, the site will remain as undeveloped land like it has for the last 15-plus years, and the city will continue collecting the $406 per year the site currently generates. Additionally, denying the abatement would have broader downstream implications, signaling to future investors that Gehanna does not prioritize the economic development and cannot be counted on for timely, consistent application review. Second, the city is guaranteed payroll tax revenue. Even though the project is speculative, the owner is assuming added financial risk by entering into a binding agreement to guarantee a minimum level of payroll tax generation to the city. If that threshold is not met, the owner will compensate the city annually for the shortfall. Failure to make those payments would be a breach of, of the agreement and result in the loss of the abatement, clearly incentivizing compliance. This structure mitigates the city's risk while preserving upside should job creation exceed expectations. By contrast, should this ordinance not be approved, the property will continue to generate zero jobs and zero payroll tax for the city in the foreseeable future. And third, the project is being solely assessed through the narrow lens of a 12-year abatement period. In reality, this facility is expected to operate for decades beyond that term, generating sustained economic and public value. Once the abatement ends, full tax revenues will flow to the city, the school district, and other public entities. Limiting the evaluation to the short-term abatement window is shortsighted and disregards the long-term fiscal and community benefits the project will deliver for generations to come. If you've got any questions, I'm happy to take them rather than just continue to read on.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion or questions from my colleagues? Mrs. Jones?
I wanted to speak to, I think you spoke at one of the meetings about the relationship between KCB Velocis and I think like 14 to 15 projects over the past number of years. Can you expound a little more on that? I'm also curious of some of the other cities of where the projects are, and users of those projects, just sharing a little bit more about kind of your history and the relationship between KCB Velocis and the projects that you've worked on together.
Certainly. So I'm with KBC Advisors.
KBC, sorry.
You're fine.
My letter's mixed up.
I'm located in Chicago, and I head up the Midwest Development Team for KBC and Velocis team. The partnership between KBC and Velocis is extensive. Between the two of us, there's been over $1 billion in industrial warehouse projects across 15 developments, as you noted, totally more than eight and a half million square feet. There, our investor base here includes some of the nation's largest pensions funds, endowments, insurance companies, family offices, and private investors. Velocis is headquartered in Dallas. They're a private equity real estate fund manager founded in 2010. Since its inception, Velocis has raised over 1.6 billion in equity and has acquired more than 3.3 billion in real estate assets across 220-plus investments. Firm launched eight actively managed funds spanning 70 property types. So there's a very extensive institutional history on Velocis's side, and from the development standpoint, the KBC and Velocis partnership have 15 projects, as I mentioned, underneath our belt as a partnership. Those projects span southwest in Arizona, Texas, Chicago area, and now we are moving east into Ohio. Of those 15 developments, 14 of them have gone off without a hitch. developments, 14 of them have gone off without a hitch. There's one development in question that does have ongoing litigation. Beyond that, the partnership is committed to transparency, ethical business. We don't foresee that being a problem in the future, and we view that as an anomaly.
Can you revisit again also too? So you mentioned Arizona, Texas, first in Ohio. A little bit more again about why Ohio?
That's a great question. I think there's a two-part answer to that. We're fortunate enough to be joined by the listing brokers for this property once it is complete tonight, Bo Taggart and Joe Kimner. We're sitting in the back corner. They're really the driving force behind the real reason we're here, and that is the market demand and activity for this product type. They're the ones who know this market better than anybody, and together they've got 30-plus years of combined industrial brokerage experience. So I'm going to let them speak to any market-related questions. Strategically, from a macroeconomic standpoint, Ohio offers you access and connectivity to most of the eastern portion of the country within one day's drive. The fiscal policies, the tenant demand, the interstate connectivity, the access to labor, and market dynamics within Columbus are what has drawn us to Columbus as a whole. And then the submarket dynamics, which Bo and Joe know very well, submarket tenant demand is kind of what zeroed us in here on the east side of town. Furthering that is the Gehanna community, the reputation you have, the benefit of living in your community, being the best ranked zip code two years in a row, great labor, there's all the benefits, the interstate access. Again, that's what really drove us to this location. And then VRG had a site that was available to acquire, so we put that under contract and started the process.
Okay. I have another one, sorry. You, so you did mention the litigation in, I believe, Texas. So we received a statement as well, I think by the Velocis team, so I don't know if you want to speak to that, if there's someone else. I guess my question, or just sort of, someone who's elected to represent a community, it sounds like the litigation came initially from concerns from residents. The community, you know, pursued litigation, and then Velocis did the counter. So I'm wondering, what kind of, what kind of relationship was with the community before? Like, how did we get from, here's how we solve the community result, or community concern by litigation versus trying to mend that relationship, fix, solve before the counter thing? So just want to understand, because that's a big relationship between a company and a community, and if that's where you, the company resulted to was litigation versus, let's build this relationship, let's talk together. I mean, that's obviously for us, a kind of, in my mind, something that we have to consider, knowing that's sort of a track record and what potentially a company could do for our community. So if you could talk a little bit more about that in this statement, that'd be great.
Yeah, certainly. Let me start. Thank you for the question. I need to start by saying that this is active litigation.
Okay.
So my answer needs to be within the framework that I'm able to speak to. This is litigation that stems from our Texas Development Team in conjunction with Velocis. I am in the Midwest. So it's removed from my daily purview, though I'm certainly aware of the goings-on and that statement that came from Velocis. Certainly, I'm aware of it as well. So understanding what is in the statement, the site that is in question was not under the control, that's part of the litigation, but there is the master development plan for the development agreement for the extra territorial jurisdiction, this large tract of land. Velocis had acquired a small portion of that. They followed the same procedure outlined in the development agreement and the same procedure previous developers had followed to permit the site for development, receiving the approvals from the private appointed design review committee and the permits from the county board. They notified the city of B Cave that they were commencing construction. They received no pushback at that time from the city of B Cave. It was only after residents started to complain that the city of B Cave filed a lawsuit. Velocis alleges that there's zoning violations, and they also strongly dispute the city's claims. They did file a counterclaim, arguing that the lawsuit violates Chapter 245 of Texas Local Government Code Due Process and Property Rights under both Texas and the U.S. Constitutions and the Texas Open Meeting Act, as the decision to sue was allegedly made without proper public notice. It's my understanding that Velocis was sued without notice from the city. There was no public meetings to discuss suing Velocis, and there was no ability for that, for Velocis and team to engage and have meaningful discussion with the community about next steps. That's really what I think prevented them from having the opportunity to have a discussion about it. Now, I do want to caveat with two things. The first is that that lawsuit is about stopping the construction, and construction is nearly complete. There was a temporary injunction placed on the property to stop construction. That injunction was removed at their first hearing. So the ongoing litigation, the trial that is set for February, is about stopping construction for buildings that are complete, kind of a moot point. Additionally, the, as it states in the statement that we submitted regarding the litigation, there's counter suits and a strong dispute for the city's position on this. So take it at face value that while the city is alleging certain things happened, Velocis also is alleging that there was neglect, crime, problems, improper procedures on behalf of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Jones. Any questions or discussion from my colleagues? Mrs. Padova.
I just want to correct the record. I think you mentioned that Skanel Properties in 2022 was passed with a waiver and emergency. That was passed with a waiver. The emergency failed, as myself and Councilwoman Bowers voted no on that, and the emergency did not go through. So I just wanted to make sure there is clarity there.
Thank you for the correction.
Thank you, Mrs. Padova. Mr. Schnitzer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So kind of what slowed this process down and got us to today was the notification to members of council of precisely that ongoing litigation, I believe, down in Texas. I'm not a lawyer by trade. Fortunately, we have an independently elected city attorney here in the city of Gehanna. At the conclusion of that meeting, I asked the city attorney if she would be so kind as to investigate that case. And I don't know, Ms. Tamara Arison, are you in a position this evening where you might be able to encapsulate or summarize your assessment and findings in looking into those filings?
Thank you. Yes. Excuse me. I did have an opportunity to do as much of a deep dive as possible into the public records that involve B Cave City and Velocis and KBC Investment Group. So my takeaway from that, and I'm not going to sit here and judge the merits of the case. I'm not the judge. I don't have access to all the discovery. I have not had any amount of time to go through the details of that. My takeaway, though, of that litigation is that there were multiple motions to compel discovery from Velocis and KBC involving their underlying investment group. And in this situation, I guess my area of concern is not necessarily that there is litigation pending or the merits of the underlying claim, but it's the actions of the parties during litigation. And my concern here is that the business structure, and we don't, I don't have access to the type of information that was submitted to Jobs Ohio and what was vetted as far as subsidiary companies, organizational charts, bank records, things of that nature. But I can say, as a general legal practice, even if the contract is sound as far as enforcement mechanisms, if the entity contracting is not sound, then the contract cannot be enforced. So that being said, if, for example, the parent company were to fold or declare bankruptcy and things of that nature, then you would have to go to a subsidiary or underlying company to try and attach someone that had assets enough to satisfy the claim. And in this case, there are multiple layers of subsidiary companies that have been identified. And so my concern is a lack of transparency in that litigation with the ultimate investor group and the financial backing of the company to say that they were able to be collected upon or enforce the contract. So again, while I'm not speaking to the merits of the claim, that was my cause of concern and takeaway from my deep dive into this litigation.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. So council's role within city government, it's fairly limited, and it's largely, you know, allocation of resources. Occasionally, we get asked to rezone. I think the flip side of the coin, when it comes to allocation of resources, is limiting risk and limiting potential liabilities. And so I just want to ask your opinion, as you have reviewed that case, as you understand the applicant and you understand the contract that, or the agreement, the proposed agreement that's in front of us, where are the risks with this, in your opinion?
The risks are the ability to make sure that we have the proper entities contracting and make sure that they're enforceable. That's the area of risk. And so with the limited information that I have available, I have some concerns there. But again, I was only, had to avail myself of the limited information that I had.
Understood. I guess the next follow-on question is, is how do we resolve that? Is that?
Can I add a few comments here? Okay. Two comments. The first, related to litigation. Second, related to our organizational structure, I think, might provide clarity on our approach and why it's that way. But first, as a reminder to the city council and the citizens of this community, being named in a lawsuit is neither an admission of guilt nor evidence of wrongdoing. If we were to take every plaintiff's allegations at face value, we'd be forced to view the city of Gehanna very differently. Based solely on the claims in the Academy Ridge Community Association lawsuit, one might conclude the city violated due process and willfully ignored zoning laws. Similarly, if we were to accept the allegations made by Speedway Transportation in 2023, we would be led to believe the city acted with racial bias. Today, we recognize these allegations were unfounded, and it was both unfair and irresponsible to allow them to shape our view of the city. I respectfully urge this council to refrain from lending undue credibility to unproven claims that have not withstood judicial scrutiny. As it relates to our organizational structure, Velocis, KBC Advisors, and all affiliated stakeholders are fully committed to conducting business in a manner that is ethical, transparent, and fiscally responsible. As developers, we have a fiduciary responsibility to protect our investment partners by identifying, managing, and mitigating potential risks that may arise throughout the lifecycle of the commercial property. As previously outlined, the ownership of this property will be a single-purpose entity known as Velocis Gehanna JV LP, with Velocis Gehanna JV GP LLC serving as the managing entity. This structure grants the managing entity signing authority on behalf of all stakeholders, requiring every individual investor to execute each legal document would be impractical and would severely hinder normal business operations. The use of SPEs is standard practice in commercial real estate. These structures are specifically designed to allow for multiple investment partners while simultaneously protecting financial interests of all parties. In fact, our lender for this project requires the use of a single-purpose ownership entity as a condition of the loan. Additionally, when originating commercial loans, banks, including our lender, are required to perform OFAC checks, ensuring that no individual investors or associated entities are sanctioned or flagged by the U.S. government. Contrary to the prior insinuations, this structure is not designed to obscure ownership or mislead the public. The institutional organization backing this development has substantial resources to ensure completion of the project and fulfillment of any additional financial obligations. Additionally, our full org chart, documentation confirming good standing, relevant entities, certificates have all been reviewed by Jobs Ohio, as I previously said. It's important to note that this ownership structure is not unique to our project or your community. Numerous institutional real estate owners and businesses operating within the Gehanna city limits follow similar practices. For example, EQT Exeter, with $31 billion in assets under management, owns 870 Clay Craft Road under the single-purpose entity titled Exeter 870 Clay Craft LP. Similarly, Stag Industrial, valued at $6.7 billion, owns 1120 Morrison Road under Stag Gehanna LLC. And similar structures are used by respected firms within your community such as LBA, Skanel Properties, and Niagara Bottling. Finally, to reiterate previous statements for the record, Velocis Gehanna JV LP will not be partaking in the practice of drop and swap, furthering our economic, furthering our commitment to transparency in conducting ethical business within the community.
Thank you. I want to be abundantly clear. Like, I'm trying to get to a point, like, I want to partner with you guys, right? I think our Economic Development Director has made a pretty sound case for the economics behind the project. The fact pattern is, is ultimately, we were up for, we were for a scheduled vote at the last regular meeting of council. A few hours before that meeting, everyone up here was notified of litigation. That litigation was handed off to the, our law director's office and asked to be reviewed. And what is coming back are concerns from, again, that independently elected law director's office, saying that they have some concerns about the corporate structure. I want to mend that bridge. So to the extent that this is normal practice, I guess I would ask the city attorney if you feel like, you know, are we, is there sufficient protection against, you know, I guess a default on the contract and the city being able to recover those claims?
I would say that I don't have the information to say that just yet. I would say that, again, my issue is not the use of a special SPE. That is common practice. My concern is the multiple layers of SPEs, that there were several companies. There's Velocis Gehanna JV LP, Velocis Gehanna JV GP LLC, Velocis Industrial Gehanna LP, whose major partner is VIF GP LLC. These are the multiple layers of the corporate structure that I found to be, more, more questions were arising that I did not have the answers to. To give you affirmative information that, yes, this is a sound contract and enforceable against this party.
Are there additional steps that we could ask your office to work with the Economic Development Office, to work with the applicants, to ultimately satisfy those concerns?
Is an organizational chart something that you'd like to see that you could review and get comfortable with? Because the use for those entities is, we have three different major investors funding the project in addition to the bank. The single-purpose entity that's buying the property, that's Velocis Gehanna JV, JV LP, is managed by the entity above. So Velocis Industrial Gehanna LP is the entity that basically takes two single-purpose entities from two individual investors and combines them into one. From there, you go down the organizational chart to the property owner, and there's the two investors that are combined into one, funding the Velocis Gehanna JV LP, and there's one additional investor, single-purpose entity, funding Velocis Gehanna JV LP directly. So the tiered ownership structure is not designed to hide who is involved in the project. What it's designed to do is effectively get money from a corporation's bank account into a single-purpose entity. That entity then goes to another single-purpose entity where a second corporation is funneling in. And when you have multiple investors in a project, you need to step them down into these different entities. They can't all fund at the project level.
An organizational chart, I believe.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, but it sounds like, from our conversation earlier this morning, and it's in my email from you last week, can I have an organizational chart? And so I was waiting to talk to them this morning, that we can make that happen, right? We can, you can provide an organizational chart that hopefully satisfies the law director's concerns.
If an organizational chart is what is required for this council to get comfortable, to prove the ordinance as proposed, we can provide an organizational chart.
And I'll just add, too, if we're talking about the abatement, you all have the ultimate control over that anyway, because if there's non-performance, you can just cancel it, right? And then, project over, abatement over.
Right.
Tax collections go back to what they should have been, right? So.
Mr. Schnitzer, Aaron Underhill, Legal Counsel.
Yes, sir.
So yes, I think that is a great point. You know, the real purpose of the Turks, the Tax Incentive Review Councils, is to ensure an annual review, and, you know, the city's a participant in that, and, you know, I've read those reports over the last couple of years, and a lot of work goes into them. So that's the first failsafe. I think, in the event of the cancellation of the incentive, then 100% of the taxes are going to where they would have otherwise, and so there's still an economic benefit to the community. I would say, secondly, the $19 million asset itself, which is the building, there's something that the city can point to right there to go after in terms of if there were some sort of a damage claim. So just put that out there, that obviously that, that single-purpose entity is always going to own that asset and will need to own that asset in order to be the beneficiary of the incentive during the term.
Thank you guys so much. It sounds like maybe a follow-up or some workings between the three parties.
Yes, sir.
Like I said, you've made what I believe to be an adequate argument for the economics of the project. I'd like to get over this concern of the city attorney's office, for me.
I'll just add a quick clarification.
I'll just add a quick clarifier, that the Tax Incentive Review Council, the Turk, makes a recommendation. They do not, they're not a decision-making authority, but they make a recommendation.
If I could play...
To us, that is correct, that is correct.
If I could, the drafted CRA as proposed today has the guarantees for the payroll tax generation. If we do not make those payments, we would be in breach of contract, and the city would have the ability to terminate the contract as well. So, it requires us to make those annual payments to get the benefit. If we don't, and you don't collect those from us, we will lose the proposed abatement on the property, anyway.
So, I guess, trying to connect the several questions here, then, if those income tax, if the amount of income tax is not collected and remitted, who is on the hook for it, I think, is the question that Mr. Schnitzer and the City Attorney are trying, hopefully going to resolve for you, and who, when that doesn't come in, does the City Attorney contact? And if she's contacting you and your office, who are you contacting to ensure that's happening?
Yeah, so, Velocis Gehanna JV LP will be on the hook for making that payment. That's the same entity that's on the hook for making the $19 million investment into the community, paying our interest carry for our lender and all the above project costs. If that entity does not make that payroll guarantee, which year one, I think, our maximum payroll exposure, if we generate no jobs, is something like $40,000, the benefits to that entity from property tax savings is well beyond $40,000. It's in our best interest to make those payments. But if Velocis Gehanna JV did not make that payment, the city would be contacting myself, I will be a part of this project until this entity never owns it again, or the individual who has signing authority, which is Paul Smith from Velocis, Dallas-based, he's the Vice President of Velocis, he's the one who has signing authority on behalf of Velocis Industrial Gehanna JV GP, which is the managing entity for the ownership. So, either the two of us.
Thank you. Any other ques... Say, Mr. Renner?
Yeah, switching gears a little bit, I think we've really talked about the legal matters and the risks pretty well. You testified before that this is something, it's a spec building, and you didn't have anybody identified when you built it at that time. Are we now to learn, because of this report, that there are entities identified and that they're likely going to be in the building? Has that, has something changed?
What I provided was just company interest that called and said, "Hey, Jeff, do you have..."
So, it's just company interest, but there is still nobody.
Well, from my side, that's what's going on. He can talk about...
From our side, I will let one of the two listing brokers, either Beau or Joe, come speak to the matter, but we have received interest from an undisclosed group who's looking to lease the facility. Their target occupancy date is a few weeks before our projected construction completion as it stands today. So, further delays to this tax abatement approval would push construction out further and risk us being out of the running for that individual group. But we received a proposal to lease the facility, middle of last week, from a full-building user who wants to lease the facility. They're projected to meet or exceed our job growth, or our job creation figures that we have provided, and they are looking for an early summer occupancy. So, you can imagine with today being July approval, should we be scheduled for the City Council meeting in early August with a 30-day cooldown period? We couldn't really even start construction until mid-September. At that point, we are running against, running up against Mother Nature in winter to get the facility constructed and delivered by early June to meet this tenants' requirement. It's something that we are actively engaged in with that client, trying to get to a lease, if we can, but without the clarity from this council on next steps and approval timeline, we can't offer them a delivery date that we know we can meet. It's a battle with our leasing efforts here.
Fair enough, I understand, but thank you. So, another question, I asked you about renewable energy, water use, and building performance, and around the perimeter of the parcel itself. You didn't have any answers to those the last time. I was wondering if maybe you've had time to reconsider or to think, and you'd like to enter that for the record.
I do appreciate the question, but since the last committee of the whole meeting in early June, we have picked up another month's worth of delays that has severe cost implications on the project when we pour foundations, winter conditions, winter concrete, winter site work. The project, any further delays will continue to bear cost on the project, and any of that wiggle room we had has now been dissolved with the added costs for site work, foundations, and pouring slabs in wintertime. So, at this point, we're not, right now, seeking any additional improvements to the base building. If that's something that's required by a tenant, once the building is delivered, it's certainly something we will consider retrofitting into the facility, but for now, the economics are tight on this, and the added costs with the winter conditions are eating up any additional margin we may have had.
I understand that, but yet, you're getting an 80%, well, the proposal is an 80% abatement.
I understand. I think, based on what Mr. Gocke had presented, there's a financial need we've demonstrated for that 80% abatement. That's not a number that was just picked up out of the wind. The market gross rents are what they are, and for us, with the severe costs we're facing with this site and the added costs for the winter conditions, for us to be competitive in the marketplace and deliver a product that tenants would want to lease, that 80% abatement is required.
The other question I had, and last remaining, is that somebody asked you, one of my colleagues asked you, that at the end of the abatement period, would you continue to own the building? And you said at that time, "No." Is that changed, or is that still the same?
I may be wrong, and these are recorded, so I can go back and look, but I think the clarification, one clarification I have is I recall saying that the JV is an opportunistic seller, so in today's market, right now, it's not a great time to sell. Some people are choosing to sell their assets. Should interest rates fall and subsequent cap rates fall, real estate value will rise, and if we do have the building leased and we're in that environment, we would look to exit the facility. I can't make a commitment today, when we will exit, how long we will own it for, the goal is to get the building constructed and leased as quickly as we can, and then, ownership from that point on, whether it's long-term hold or a fast sell, is really up to market conditions and the demand for purchasing that leased asset at that point.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Renner. Mrs. Padova?
So, I think when you were answering Councilwoman Jones's question a while back, you said a few numbers that were in the billions. Can you repeat those again? I think it was in regards to Velocis and...
Yes. So, Velocis, which is headquartered in Dallas, Texas, is a private equity real estate fund manager founded in 2010. Since its inception, Velocis has raised over $1.6 billion in equity and has acquired more than $3.3 billion in real estate assets across 220-plus investments. The firm has launched eight actively managed funds spanning seven property types, providing institutional and high-net-worth investors with differentiated opportunities in high-growth markets. Now, in total, Velocis and KBC have developed over $1 billion in industrial warehouse projects across 15 developments, totaling more than 8.5 million square feet.
So, over 15 projects, you guys have gained one, say that last part again?
It's a billion dollars in project value across the 15 total projects, which totals more than 8.5 million square feet.
So, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out, we keep hearing that this is need-based, and so, I'm, I see the numbers here, the rent with abatement, $11, without abatement, 12, 11, average regional gross rent is 10.97. But I'm having a hard time understanding, you guys will, it sounds like there's a good chance that you guys may be selling this, this warehouse before this abatement is over. So, is the need, the need to make your money back within a certain timeframe so that then you can sell it and make a certain percentage?
The need is driven based off of market rental rates. So, it's a combination of what is a tenant who may be looking for 100,000 feet going to pay if they came to our building? What are they going to pay if they go to Columbus, and what are they going to pay if they go to New Albany? We feel like our direct competition here is assets in New Albany because... I might just have Beau, or, yeah, why don't Beau, why don't you?
So, I'm Beau Taggart, I'm the leasing agent here. So, the tax abatement that we're seeking really has to do, like what Jonathan was saying, about being competitive within the marketplace. So, as he, as he was saying, in New Albany and other areas, we're facing competition that has 15-year, 100% tax abatement. So, their operating expenses may be half of what we have because of our exposure, just with that 20%. So, when a tenant comes into town, they might have five or six different options that they're looking at, and then it comes down to lease rate, right? To be competitive, and we have all these good things going on in Gehanna, but we have to have a competitive lease rate, or else the building won't sit on the market, sit vacant, and if we're vacant, we have to be paying taxes, we have to be paying, carrying costs, we have to be paying their loan costs, the cost just up, the utilities to the building are very expensive. So, we're, we need a tax abatement in order to make this building competitive to what the market is right now. And it's, it's just, all throughout the city, there is not a speculative building that doesn't have a tax abatement. That's just a fact. I mean, you have to have it, and Columbus is a speculative market. I mean, we always have been, that's what we are, that's how we bring business to this market, and that's what we're trying to achieve today.
If I could, just to add numbers as it relates to the project costs, if we didn't have an abatement here, we would need to deliver this building for just over $14 million in total project cost. As Jeff said, today, the actual cost to deliver this building is just over $19 million in total project cost. So, if we magically found $5 million or priced the cost for site work and everything came down $5 million, we wouldn't be standing here and needing the abatement. When I said earlier that this abatement needs to get approved for the project to proceed, that is because we don't have another way to make up the $5 million in total project cost that would be required to be reduced if we did not have the abatement in place.
I'll just, one more thing, too, about the, are we trying to make back money on a sale? Actually, when an investor comes to buy a property, the tax abatement can actually be a big hindrance, right? Because the investor's coming in and they're thinking, "Well, what am I going to do when this property hits tax abatement? Is my gross rent going to go down? Is my net rent going to go down because my operating expenses are going to go up?" So, it would actually be better if we could lease it without an abatement, but it's just not possible because of the competition in the market. So, we're just seeking to meet the demand of the market today.
It's the only option that Gehanna has of offering.
If you'll come to the mic, please.
I think it's important, sorry, I can't help myself, the other leasing agent. So...
Start again from the mic and name for the record, please.
Sorry about that. Joe Kimener, this is the only option in Gehanna that they're looking at. It's the only thing that's competitive. Size range, what the company wants, and then you're competing with other communities. We know what we're competing with, and we think we can win this project, can't win it without this. So, that's why it's so important, that's why we're here tonight. So, I hope you know you're competing with other communities outside of it, and this is the only solution, excuse me, Gehanna has, to win this business.
So, thank you, Mr. Kimener. I think you've touched on maybe my, my underlying concern. I know you've heard from, concerns from my other colleagues and previous meetings as well. You know, certainly Gehanna is not alone in terms of being a first suburb, or in terms of competition for businesses. Every, every community surrounding Columbus, central Ohio, is, you know, we see it from the staff level. We're competing for similar staff. We are competing for high-paying jobs with surrounding communities. So, I understand that abatements are a tool, and to Mr. Kimener's point, the, this property, in my view, given its location in this area where we are now seeing renewed interest and growth for our community, in a largely landlocked city where we don't have as many opportunities to start and build from scratch, I'm wrestling with the question of, is this the best, I don't want to say highest and best use, because I know that's a term of art, but is this the project for, that's best for Gehanna? So, I appreciate the concern, or I appreciate the comments, and just letting you know, that is what's on my mind, and I know my, you know, not saying I don't share the concerns my other colleagues have raised, but I haven't heard that one yet tonight. And so, maybe, maybe this is for you, if you can give us, why is this the, and maybe this is a Director Gocke question, why is this the best project, not just in terms of use, what is the function, but in terms of timing, limitations on the property? I know we've touched on some of that in previous meetings, but I do think it's important for the record.
I can start by answering, and then you can follow up with any, anything you have to add, but I think throughout the various council meetings we've had, I think we've clearly demonstrated the need for this product type in the community. If there is any further questions on that, we're happy to speak to it. Related to timing, I mean, moving this on to the City Council agenda in two weeks and approval, you would have almost immediate action on our behalf. As soon as the cooldown period concluded, we would be acquiring land and starting construction. We would be providing that tax benefit as quickly as we can to the city. As relates to site constraints and use, we are, we are approved through Planning and Zoning Commission, we have a civil grading permit issued at this point for site work. We are strictly waiting for the abatement approvals to close and start the project. There's significant site constraints that still remain with this piece of property. We've discussed them in the past, but there's a number of various challenges that we're facing here, which is part of the reason why we need the abatement, it's part of the reason why we're seeking and were awarded grant money from Jobs Ohio. And in terms of community benefit, I think the, the question that you all should ask yourselves is, today, we have $406 of benefit to the city and zero jobs. That's been the case for the last 50 years, 50-plus years. While the sellers here can certainly speak to past activity and interest in the site, I know it has not been much. There's been a few attempts for other groups who have come through, but today, you have a very reputable development company with institutional partners who have been approved at Planning Commission, who have civil grading permits issued, who are in the process of receiving building permits. We have a grant, and we have a lender. And in today's market, aligning that capital stack and getting those approvals speak to our relationships, our knowledge, and our reputation within the industry and our expertise. So, it's either, don't approve this amendment as proposed, be left with the $406 of revenue the city has and no job creation, or approve an abatement that is within the average term, within the average percentage of recent abatements approved, includes better annual salaries and payroll guarantees, providing Gehanna, at the very least, the payroll tax income, and at the best, you reap the benefits of the upsides of potential future jobs.
Thank you.
If you'll just state your name for the record, please, thank you.
Sorry about that, Councilmember Weaver. Jordan Fromm, Value Recovery Group 2 LLC.
Councilmember Weaver, Jordan Fromm, Value Recovery Group, II LLC. So the corporate structure is an interesting conversation because it reminds me a bit of when we developed our industrial site, 870 Clay Craft, down on Clay Craft Drive. Had a, now I can't say apples to apples, our corporate structure was similar, but yeah, you had a GP and an LP in a single-purpose entity, and then under each GP, under the GP and under the LP, you had different sub-entities that made up the investor pool. And so, you know, when you're looking as an investor at a project like this, your main concern is, am I going to get a return on this investment? Otherwise, I'm not going to participate with this project. And so I just think it's interesting how, how similar our situations are here, well, with really any development client, any development site around the city or in the country, development through SPEs is commonplace, and it seems, seems very similar. Questions did come up about the suitability of the site and the development, and we've been owners of this site since 2005. We came into ownership as a result of the cleanup of the Bedford Two landfill and the extension of the roads, which we all paid a third, a third, and a third for. We took on the land pre-pandemic because we felt that there would be upside to the community and around a cleaned-up landfill that, you know, the Franklin County Treasurer was behind that effort and wanted to see a clean Gehanna, as did the city of Gehanna. Economic development with Siddica White, state of Ohio, was a very, very positive direction. But this site has sat on the market for a very long time. And as you may appreciate, maybe perhaps having sold a home, a cash offer closing in 15 days is a lot better than contingent on financing for 30. And so we've had some interest in the site. The interest has primarily been tire kickers, unserious buyers, dreamers, who, you know, do you want to be in a contract with those folks for 200 days or more? And those days are increasing as we're waiting to see types, these types of approvals. And so I, my listing broker is here, Bob Lockett, who has worked with us for the greater part of all of those years we've been in possession of these sites. I believe, what, about 15 years he's been representing us?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years. And we take the referrals from the state of Ohio that come through the economic development director's office. Those sites never end up being competitive for those purposes, but if there's something built, there is. And so when we met KBC, we believed that this was a group we would be willing to be in contract with for 200 days or more, or more, or more. And here we are today, again, standing behind what we believe their competence to be in delivering a product like this, to be a launchpad for similar developments like ours for benchmark, KB, or ADB Safegate, Crocodile Cloth, and you name it.
Thank you, Mr. Fromm.
My name is Bob Lockett, and I work with Altera Real Estate. I've been involved in this project since probably 2007, so it goes back quite a long ways. I don't know if anybody here has been around that long, but at that time, Gehanna had some real issues with some of the abatements they had done, and they had strapped themselves pretty well as far as it was concerned. Back in those days, we were competing against New Albany for a number of different projects. Always, when we got down to the very end of it, New Albany had an abatement, Gehanna was not in a position to do those abatements at that time. We struggled for four or five years to get to the point where Gehanna could finally do some of those abatements, and success has come, but it's come slowly. When we look for people to partner with, and we get a call from these gentlemen, we do our research as well. You guys understand bond ratings? This is AAA. I don't know who else is out there that's going to come and be higher than this, but this is AAA in our business right here. It's an honor to work with them, and I would recommend that you consider it very carefully because if these are the people that don't get approved, there's going to be some devastation that comes. And these guys are finally, after a number of years with working Gehanna, on their job. They know what they're doing. The city has got a group of people that really know what they're doing, and it's been a pleasure working with them. So that's my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lockett.
Do you mind if I answer that?
Director, please.
A little bit? Because I'm, I'm, we're all on the same team here a little bit. I've been in your spot, right? Now I'm in this spot, and I'll tell you, there's no perfect project. Is it the project? Ah, ah, right?
This is why I'm asking, this is why I asked, because you and I had had this, you know, brief conversation where we touched on this, I thought this would be good.
Yeah, there's no perfect project. Every project that I've been involved with, there's concern, there's worry. What if this doesn't happen? What if they don't perform, right? What if the market changes? I think we're dealing with some of that in New Albany, right? So definitely get it, like that, that should be top of mind for you guys, for us, for Mayor, everybody, like, there is no perfect project, right? And it's worrisome. But what can you do about it is the question, right? So the best thing that we can do as a city is two things. Get the best deal that we can, keeping in mind that they're trying to do the same thing, right? They're having the same conversation at their board meetings. And two, minimize our risk. So how do we do that? Look at the partners for indicators of the quality and the success of the company, right? And I'm trying not to be super, like, one way or the other here. I'm trying to provide information for you all to make your decisions, right? But look at the indicators of, of the company. Look at the funding. There's all these things that can happen that kind of point us to, is this a good deal or not? Funding, partners, Jobs Ohio support, we talked about. The history of similar projects in the city? Does this type of project work here or not? And then we, as the city, have a whole bunch of processes ourselves that are meant to minimize risk and maximize the, the best deal that we can get, right? Land use plans, zoning, engineering controls, this tax abatement, this is all part of that, that discussion. So I, I get it. I'm with you. Like, this keeps me up at night, too, because we're, you know, you don't, we don't ever want to feel like we're driving past something that didn't work out, right? So the, the best we can do is get the best deal we can and minimize our risk of failure. That's not very like coach rah rah, but like that, that's, that's how I look at it.
Director, I think that's, I think it's helpful for, for a level setting. We've, we've had a lot of questions, we've had a lot of folks speaking to various concerns. And I think it's an important level set of what we're trying, what we're trying to find out and what we're trying to do here. So I think with that, I'm going to make one more call for any questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues. Seeing none, I, I know that we are scheduled for a vote on the fourth, on the regular agenda. Is it the will of council to move forward with a vote on the fourth? Yes, Mr. Schnitzer?
Would it be appropriate for some of the supporting documentation that was mentioned before to be distributed by email? Some, Madam City Attorney, I'm looking in your direction. Anything that would go from the applicant to the economic development department, to your office, and then ultimately to us? Obviously, there wouldn't be any discussion in those emails, but just for informational purposes.
Yes.
I think I would, I'm sorry, I think I would add, if possible, I know I'd, I'd asked about what Jobs Ohio reports, if, if Jobs Ohio has given the applicant anything, I know you submitted an application to them, but if you have any sort of final report that we're not going to be able to get, if you have something like that, I understand if you don't, but...
We are under a non-disclosure for the grant amount. What we could provide is the draft grant agreement that Jobs Ohio gives to all their grant applicants once approved. And again, as I can say, we did make the presentation, and we were approved, so we're in grant agreement.
I think that's reasonable. Thank you. And if that could be shared with the other documents, that'd be great. So seeing nothing further than on this item, we'll proceed as planned on the fourth. All right. Thank, thank you all very much. I know we have one last quick item here. I don't know if folks know this, but we are in the presence of royalty in Gehanna. The Franklin County Fair Queen is a resident of Ward Four, just announced last week, and this would be a resolution recognizing her. Look forward to working with the family as we're getting some additional information about the process in becoming the Franklin County Fair Queen, but I'll hopefully have a draft for folks to review. Without objection, I would love to do a ceremonial presentation on our, on our meeting on the fourth, and happy to put it on the regular agenda so that folks can see it beforehand. So, all right. Without objection, anything further for committee this evening? All right, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Thanks.